Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
We at Falmouth Fish believe there is nothing better than a fresh piece of fish direct from the waters of Cape Cod in New England. Nothing beats waking up at 4:00 A.M. to search out the highest-quality seafood from the best fishermen in the world. It's this freshness that we've prided ourselves on bringing to the community since 1988.
Welcome to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all to the Monday, October 3 meeting of the Town of Falmouth Board of Selectmen. First item on our agenda is a proclamation for an Eagle Scout. Mr. Patterson, are Eagle Scout residents?
No, my son. But I'm lucky enough to help a lot of them get to that point. That's what I'm proud of. Whereas James V. Toner of Boy Scout Troop Forty has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting, and James V. Toner met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community. And the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank, and James V. Toner is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege. Now therefore, we Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Samuel Patterson, Megan English-Braga, and Douglas C. Brown, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Saturday, October 15, 2016, is James V. Toner Day. In witness thereof, we have set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed.
Motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
Congratulations, Mr. Toner. I hope he feels well.
Did you want to... Jimmy unfortunately is down and out.
This doesn't look like Jim Toner.
This is his dad, Jim Toner.
If you come to the podium, please, just so that you can... Now, the TV audience here, you're also. Congratulations.
Jimmy came home from school today sick as a dog, and he's really unhappy that he can't be here. But he wanted me to thank the board for this proclamation and remind you all that you're invited to a court of honor, October 15, at 4:00. Thank you very much.
Congratulations to him. Congrats.
Next, we have a resolution for Community Media Day. Mr. Brown?
Resolution. Whereas the sharing of ideas and information helps to build common understanding and common values within a community, and whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community, and whereas community media organizations provide a means for diverse communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories, and create new stories together, and whereas community media organizations provide information to the community that is not covered by mainstream commercial media, and whereas community media organizations provide people with the skills necessary for the creation, sharing, and consumption of knowledge and ideas through media, and whereas community media is an important resource for participating in local democratic policy and process, and whereas community media connects community organizations, schools, and local governments to their constituents, and whereas in many communities, people are not aware of the diverse and valuable programming on public education and government access channels or community radio channels, and whereas communities will benefit from increased general awareness of viewing audiences for and creators of media content created by and for the community. Now therefore, it be resolved that October 20, 2016, is hereby proclaimed as Community Media Day within Falmouth, Massachusetts, and all people are hereby called upon to promote the importance of community media training available at Falmouth Community Television, FCTV, and programming available on FCTV, Channels 13, 14, and 15. Be it further resolved that Falmouth Community Television plays a vital role in the building of our community by encouraging conversations about our common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused this great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed. Douglas Jones, Chairman, Susan L. Moran, Samuel H. Patterson, Megan English-Braga, and Douglas C. Brown, Board of Selectmen.
It's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Any announcements on the board or from town manager?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to speak on something that's not on our agenda, you may come to the podium. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Mrs. Wieg?
Good evening. My name is Ronzweig, and I'm the, uh, your representative on the governing board of the Cape Light Compact. And I'd just like to announce that Massachusetts this year, for the sixth straight time, has been ranked number one in terms of energy efficiency accomplishments through the year. This year's the sixth year in a row, and tied, though, with California. So California caught up with us this year, and that's something to say. It's not just the Cape Light Compact, it's for the whole state and all of the different programs here, but the compact is a core element of that. And I just want to remind everyone that, um, that it's, again, the days are getting shorter. I guess I don't have to tell everybody that, and it's getting a little cooler. But for energy efficiency programs, for lighting, for heating, for household appliances, there's an energy efficiency program, and you can contact the compact, and that has, they'll do a, assess your house for its needs in that regard, and you can call them at 1-800-797-6699. And they will arrange for an assessment to be done and then follow up. And there are a lot of incentives, a lot of financial help for residents, for households, businesses, rental properties across in Falmouth and across the Cape that you can gain benefit from that. For low-income folks, there's also a special program that has more attractive incentives for these different aspects, and they can be contacted. Housing Assistance Corporation of Cape Cod can be contacted at 508-771-5400. So I would encourage everyone to take advantage of this. It saves you money, it saves the environment, as well as, um, is a great benefit overall. So it's a good thing to look into.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak on anything not on our agenda?
Would you mind expanding on that just a bit? I mean, I'm in the construction business. I've referred a lot of people to that program, and they, uh, you only pay 25 percent, they'll do up to $4,000 worth of work on your house if you're a homeowner. If you're a renter, you don't pay anything. They'll come and do all the work with no charge. So it's a great program. And we have our own Cape Save, there's Mass Save, which is statewide, Cape Save, we have our own program, and they're a little quicker service.
I guess one other thing I would add under announcements is, maybe Mr. Patterson has more exact information on this. I did see in the paper that the MCAS scores came out for the Town of Falmouth, and once again, the Town of Falmouth has done very, very well in having, I think, almost all of our schools either level one or level two schools, or tier one or tier two. And just I wanted to commend the school department and the teachers for the fantastic work they've been doing in that regard. Next item, our minutes of our meetings from August 29. Any changes, corrections?
Just a couple of typos, I guess you'd say. On page two, um, where it says, Mr. Patterson's motion to approve. And the last, the vote was, well, it had to be four to zero because Doug hadn't joined us at that point, so the vote count is a little bit off. And then, uh, and then I think there's another vote count off on number three, the first motion again. Since Megan had recused herself, I think it has to be just three to zero. Like I said, typos can be easily corrected. That's it. So I would move that we approve the minutes of August 29, 2016.
I just had one name that I want to change. This is on page five. Bill Diamond, I think it's Bill Dynan.
Dynan.
D-Y-N-A-N.
Yep.
Otherwise, that was all set with it.
Okay. But I move minutes as corrected.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. And one abstention from Mr. Brown. Now we have Monday, September 19.
If I might add a little more detail, on number five of the open session points, where it talks about Brian Nickerson giving his comments up front, and talks about this past Saturday, and it's the first project by volunteers on the Friends of Knobstal Light, on the lighthouse itself. There were 25 volunteers, and I'd like to actually make sure this was specific and also use it as an opportunity to give credit, but it should be the Falmouth High School Honor Society students, Boy Scout Troop Forty, and the group that actually organized this painting party was the Falmouth, was the Rotary Club of Falmouth, which is not included. And I think they deserve some credit for organizing this effort, and it got done on that Saturday.
Any other changes?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Brown?
On the third page at the top, we were talking about the tree removal on, uh, what street?
King Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, no, whatever it was. So I believe I commented that I was in favor of the larger trees there being installed. I don't know if that was a mix-up with you, or you said the same thing, but I also asked if Mr. Combs would consider another tree on the back corner, and he said he thought he could do that. So I think that might should be reflected in there. And then we talked about possibly other plantings along the edge to block the headlights there. And then one other item on the next page, about halfway down, when we were discussing the McGansett Crossing housing, I asked Mr. Galasso about the fact that the previous approved designs by the planning board were for three different designs, and that he'd modified that into one design for all the buildings. And I mentioned, I thought that he must need to go back and bring that past them because it was approved that way. So I think that should be in the record also. And that's it for me.
Any other questions, changes?
Motion to approve with those changes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Great. Next item on our agenda is to affirm the appointment of our new Assistant Town Manager. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to recommend to you that Peter Johnson Staub be appointed as Assistant Town Manager for the Town of Falmouth. Peter's a highly experienced professional municipal manager with a record of considerable accomplishments. He has an excellent educational background, and he has served with distinction in multiple municipalities in the Commonwealth, including the towns of Lexington and Andover, and since 2001, our neighboring town of Yarmouth on the Cape. Peter has important insight and experience on multiple issues of importance to the Town of Falmouth and of significant commonality to municipalities located on Cape Cod. Peter and his family are residents of nearby Sandwich. I know the board has seen a copy of Peter's resume and background information as well. And I would respectfully ask members of the board to affirm the appointment of Peter Johnson Staub as Assistant Town Manager. And I'd also ask you to waive the residency requirement, as I noted, that he and his family do live in nearby Sandwich. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we're delighted that Peter is in attendance with us this evening and would be available to make a few comments if that would be the pleasure of the board.
Okay. I'd love to have a motion first, and then welcome him and introduce him.
I move that we support the town manager's employment of Peter Johnson Staub to the position of Assistant Town Manager.
Do you want to include the waiver of his residence program?
And that we waive the residency requirement.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson Staub, if you'd come introduce yourself, we're thrilled to have you join us. I know we've seen your resume. I had a chance to meet you last week, and I think the town is really going to be very well-served by what you already know and your enthusiasm for this position.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, and I have to say, I'm really excited to be here, and thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank Julian as well as the board. Um, I'm, uh, you know, I wasn't actively searching because I'm in the midst of an interim appointment right now in Yarmouth, but when this opportunity arose and I started to look at it, it was just too good to pass up. The position has a lot of overlap with what I do now, but it has enough of a difference in emphasis that it will present some new challenges for me. And certainly, I welcome the opportunity to be in a new community, and particularly one as vibrant and diverse as Falmouth. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to getting to work.
Great. We'll make sure your seat's available soon.
Can I ask a question of you while we've got you here, Peter?
Sure. What are your thoughts? All the Cape towns are facing the stresses of change, technology, aging populations, environmental impacts. What do you see as kind of the keys to maintaining some vital economic progress, if you will, quality of life, and environmental stewardship? What do you see are some of the key elements in maintaining that, from your experience, having, I'm sure, dealt with these issues in the past? Do you have any things that pop into mind? You don't ask small questions, do you? No, that's the toughest one we're dealing with, though. Yeah, that's a lot. So, um, you know, the easiest response, I think, the one that comes to mind is that ties a number of things that you touched on together is wastewater. Uh, that's, you know, obviously something that all of the communities on the Cape are dealing with, and you're fortunate that you're ahead of most in that you at least have a core wastewater treatment system that can be expanded upon. Yarmouth and other, you know, Dennis and Harwich don't have that opportunity. Um, so, you know, that is a difficult fiscal challenge, and one that I've spent quite a bit of time looking into, and have had an opportunity to work with some great thinkers on that subject in terms of how one can go about that and minimize the tax burden and the impact to the customers. So facilitating that in a way that can stimulate redevelopment and new development is certainly a key. I think one of the keys for a town organization, and really for the private sector as well, is workforce, right? One of the biggest limiting factors to economic development on the Cape is a shortage of skilled labor. Now, how you solve that problem is not so easy. Housing, affordable housing, is a part of that mix, and, you know, when I say affordable housing, there's a wide range, including housing that requires, you know, a significant income to support. But the more housing and affordable housing a community can create, you know, puts a downward pressure on the price of housing throughout the, um, you know, throughout the community. So those are some of the things that come to mind. There are challenges for the municipality itself. One of the big ones that's looming, I think, that connects to many of the issues that you cited, is attracting talent. And I think we're going to see it's going to become more and more difficult to keep our wages where they are and attract talent. And again, that's something that's not easily solved, but an area that I've spent a bit of time looking into, and I have some ideas about how we might go about that.
I think as Mr. Patterson made it very clear, we're hoping you are going to be able to jump right in and give us suggestions and ideas you bring from another town that's similar to us but also different, and I think we will be able to take full advantage of the knowledge that you have, so.
Great.
And thank you.
Look forward to it.
Welcome.
Welcome, Peter.
Next item is a request for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license by the Falmouth Track Club, the Falmouth Historical Society, on Sunday, October 30, 2016. Do we have someone from the Track Club that would like to... Courtney, if you'd... I guess I want to make sure I understand exactly what is this new and what is this about?
Yes, I'm Courtney Byrd. I'm a member of the Falmouth Track Club. I directed the Cape Cod Marathon for 30 years until I retired. Um, and I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, so I'm active in town affairs. And the, uh, we were fortunate to get, the Cape Cod Marathon was fortunate to get a beer sponsor. And so I was approached by the, um, by the director of the marathon, who knew I liked beer, and said, "It's your job to apply for this permit and follow through on it." So that's, the application is a result of that. Um, I can, do you have specific questions, or, I mean, I've kind of outlined in the application what we're doing. We've gotten the permission, the Falmouth Historical Society, to set up a tent, which is 20 by 100, on their grounds on Sunday, and we would, um, then serve beer out of that. The beer is being donated, so we've got tips, qualified bartenders to serve it. We have already gotten a liability insurance, add-on to our regular sanction liability for a million dollars in liability insurance. We'll be happy to provide you with a copy of that. Um, so that's kind of where we are. We, in the, in the application, I gave you a map, um, that showed how we were laying it out. Um, and so the perimeter of this tent will have either sides or metal barricades to separate the non-drinkers, and those who are from there will have people checking IDs at the entrance. Um, we will have two tip-certified bartenders serving the beer, no more than two per person. Uh, we, we, um, the runners themselves will, if they're over 21, will get a ticket for one complimentary beer, after which they have to buy it. And the pricing will be the $3 for, um, runners, or $5 for people who are either friends or from the outside. And we'll manage all of that internally inside that. So the one, I should have known better, being a licensed contractor, but when I drew that diagram in a hurry, I neglected to, I had an in, and I had an emergency out. I neglected to have a primary out. So if you look at the diagram where it says two ID checkers, and you have a barricade, that'll be tilted slightly to allow people to go out, and we'll have somebody there to make sure that it's one way out, not two ways. So that's, that's the sum and substance of it. We'll serve beer from, um, probably 10:30, 11:00, when the runners finish, up until about 3:00.
Sure. Um, did the, does the Falmouth Historical Society get a benefit?
Uh, yes. Well, obviously, we're using their grounds, so this is the second year in a row that we have done this, although we didn't have beer last year. So in return for that, we gave them a donation, and we plan to increase that. We're also, as far as the insurance is concerned, is that we'll name them as a co-insured on a certificate of insurance, and they, and this is all worked out with them in advance.
Great. I appreciate the comprehensive presentation in terms of the beer line monitor, the barricades. It seems to make a lot of sense, and it seems like you covered all of the important considerations.
Thank you. I mean, I, this is, other than liking beer, this is the first time I've set something like this up. So I hope I covered the bases, and I figured you'd tell me if I didn't.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I see one item that needs to be conditioned, and that's that you have to get a permit for a tent this size, and it needs to get inspected by the, you should know about inspections.
Obviously, that's a given. I didn't put that in because we already would have had a tent there anyway, and we have to get a permit for that, which we would. So that's all part of the program.
Thank you.
Great.
So my three questions are, you would say approximate number of people, 1,500?
You know, we have no idea. We have, we'll have about, what, 800 finishes the marathon? Is that what you're guessing?
Yeah, well, 700, probably.
Yeah, 700 or 800, and then we have 200 relay teams with 500, 5 people each. Now, a lot of those are underage. So, and then you have guests, so I'm using the, I'm using around number 1,500. It could be 1,600, it could be 1,300. I just don't know. This is the first year we've done it, but we're, we're gonna assume 15. We're gonna plan for, you know, a larger group because that's, we want to make sure it works well from every standpoint. I mean, we don't want to, we don't want this to be a not-good thing. And, you know, we try to cover all the bases.
Second question is the proceeds. You're saying the beer is donated, and there's going to be a donation to the historical society.
The Falmouth Track Club is a 501(c)(3). The Cape Cod Marathon is probably the, well, it is the biggest event that the Track Club puts on. While our goal is not to specifically be, have the Cape Cod Marathon as a fundraiser, um, our goal is to stage a terrific event that benefits the club, benefits the town, is great for runners, everybody wins. And we obviously hope to make a profit with that marathon. And when we do, we dedicate a significant portion of our proceeds to local charities, local nonprofits, whether it's school athletic programs, or groups like the Falmouth Service Center, or whoever. We make those decisions after the event and based on how much money we have taken in. And I know the last year I did it, we donated close to $30,000 to community events. I've, since I've stepped back from that, I don't know what the exact numbers are, but that's the goal. So this is not a profit-making operation.
And my last question is, I think there's been support for the marathon because of the business it brings into town. After the marathon, people would go to restaurants and partake of the
Yeah.
food and festivities that are in town. I guess I'm a little worried, is that going to at least take away that benefit to the townspeople, to the business that are...
The Cape Cod Marathon is a whole weekend of events. Runners start arriving on Friday. We have a half marathon on Saturday, and then we do the full marathon and a relay on Sunday. So we're hoping that people are going to get here on Friday, they're going to stay in hotels, they're going to go visit restaurants and so forth, things like that. Um, a few years back, and I, I neither, I haven't updated it, and I don't know whether it's been totally updated since then, but the, we did a, an analysis, um, that showed that there were 3,600 or so participants in the marathon, and they brought, on average, two and a half people. I'm not sure I saw too many half people running around, but they, on average, brought that. So that gets you up to close to 10,000 people. And then they, all these people are staying in hotels. And then they, all these people are staying in hotels and so forth. We did percentages. Unfortunately, asked a question, I didn't bring in the statistics from eight years ago. But we estimated through using similar criterias in other communities, that the marathon generated over $3 million in economic impact to the town of Falmouth. So, yeah, this event is two or three hours on Sunday, and will nobody go to the restaurants as a result. I, I think they're going to be all over the town. And the other thing about the marathon is it comes at the end of October. It's not in the middle of the summer, so it's a time when it's kind of the shoulder season. So it's kind of a nice shot in the arm.
No way am I questioning the marathon at all. I guess it's just a little bit distant.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, this is very much part of the event, and, and so I can't speak to this in isolation. Will people not go to Liam's because of this? I can't answer that.
And I think what, the only reason I brought any of this up is, my initial reaction was, you're going to have people running 26 miles, awfully dehydrated, who are from out of town, then give them a couple of beers and put them on the road. And it just struck me as being an odd choice. But then, if they're going to be marathoners, they already know how to take care of themselves, and then they're going to be in good shape and be able to handle it.
I've been part of the running community for a long time, and I can tell you that there are lots and lots of events that serve malt beverage following the events. And, you know, people, we always have an element in our community that, in any community, that, you know, go overboard. I don't think, though, from my experience in dealing with runners in a lot of different contexts, that, you know, this is not a fraternity house. It's not, it doesn't turn into that kind of thing. People have a couple of beers, they have some food, and oftentimes, they have their families with them, and so they're gonna, they're gonna treat this as a mutual thing.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
The only thing I question is the, the location of the tent, right next to the church parking lot. And the church is going to get out around the same time as you guys are starting to party, and I just feel like some people are going to question that, if it's in good taste. That's my only thought.
Well, I believe, and Tom, you can speak to that, I think we're, Tom Davis is the director of the marathon, but I believe that there's not an overlap. We may start serving beer at 11 o'clock, but the, which is three hours after, or two and 1/2 hours after the start. But my experience, knowing the demographics of this, is that the majority of the runners are not going to finish until 12, which is almost three and 1/2, four hours into the event. And so I don't think there's going to be a negative impact on the, on the church.
Okay.
And we will, as part of our process in the, checking things, we will make sure we speak with the church, and we're on the same page with them. That, that's part of our checklist.
Okay. Mr. Patterson?
To me, that base, I already had a question about parking, but then competition for the church parking area is likely to be a problem. Are you going to be placing that parking?
This has always been.
And let me just follow up on the second piece, which is, are you going to be encouraging people to use the Lawrence parking area? Because that is an easy walk to the back of the museum on the green.
You know, again, some of the logistics of the marathon have changed since I did it, but one of the things that we made sure that happened was that we had volunteers making sure that people who were not going to church didn't use the church parking lot there. We're going to encourage people to char, to park at Lawrence School, and, you know, the municipal lots away from there. So I don't, I don't foresee that as being an issue.
Yeah, I think it was already in a special event.
You know, Tom's hearing the message loud and clear, and I'm sure that.
I think that was already in the special event that we approved, that the parking.
Yeah, I know. But, but, you know, it's, it's, this is, what I would say is that a lot of the, the context of this is in the organization of the whole event. This is an add-on in the event. And we provide for control of traffic on Main Street and in parking lots, where, and we coordinate with the churches, because we don't want to overlap with their services. And that's all part of our normal process, year in and year out. This is an addition, additional element in it, and we'll just make sure to cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the special license for the sale of wine and malt beverages for October 30th.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is a special one-day liquor license for wine and malt beverages for the Coonamisit Farm, Ron Smolowicz manager, for Sunday, October 9th, 2016. Any questions on this one?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is a, two special one-day wine and malt liquor licenses. The Gray Matter Marketing Craft Beer Festival, the Cape Cod Fairgrounds, for Saturday and Sunday, October 29th to October 30th. This was an event that was originally scheduled for this past weekend, and they have postponed it to this. The, this is a special event that's on the fairgrounds, gets approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, as opposed to approved by this board. But they're requesting a one-day liquor, or two one-day liquor licenses for their event. Do we have anyone from this organization? Any questions for Gray Matter Marketing? Matthew Gray?
I'm just, well, I would just ask if, I don't know if you have seen, or you were given any of the feedback from the Falmouth Police Department about their recommendation or their concerns about staffing for that day? Just given that another, the event that we just spoke about is going on, and just concerns about particularly that high-traffic area.
Absolutely. My name is Matthew Gray, President of Gray Matter Marketing. Thank you for having me here. We're certainly well aware of the Cape Cod Marathon. We actually host and produce the Newport Marathon in Newport, Rhode Island, which is on Sunday of this week, so we know everything that goes into it, and we understand a lot of logistics, logistical challenges. With our event in the past, we've always had officers from multiple jurisdictions participating, whether it was Sandwich, or Mashpee, or even Bourne. So we've been able to have the necessary police. We have not heard firsthand that that will be an issue today. I hadn't heard anything about it until he said that. We're certainly happy to work with them on that. Our event numbers are certainly down this year because of the date change, so we'll have less of an impact on traffic, and certainly less bodies at the festival itself. Also, being a month later than we had hoped, it will certainly be a lot colder out, so people probably won't be turning out for that reason. So we expect our attendance to be down significantly.
I know it'll be a guess, but can you at least give us a guess as to what you think your numbers might be?
Probably just over 1,000, 1,100, 1,200 people total for the weekend. Typically, it's a 2,200-person weekend. So it's, you know, certainly not ideal for us to have moved. We didn't want that to happen. It's a clerical issue on our part to not have the proper license, which is very unfortunate, but certainly something that we've addressed and made adjustments for.
Any other questions?
I move approval.
I have a question, actually. I noticed that the, the chief of police is here, and the captain, Reed, from the police department, had made a request that the event be contained on the fairground property, and that the event not used across public roadways. Would the event be able to, could you run it that way?
So typically, this is a road race, using roadways versus like a cross-country-style event, which would be, if we had to do it in the fairgrounds proper, it would be like a multiple-loop course around the fairgrounds itself, which are, have you been to the fairgrounds? The terrain can be quite different than, you know, some of the paved roadways. You know, we certainly understand and respect that, and if that's the wishes of the police department, we'll do our best to make those adjustments and host the event within the fairgrounds proper.
The, the reason I, one of the reasons I ask that is because I've been to really countless running events at the fairgrounds, the cross-country, you know, all of the events that have really had, you know, teams from all over the Cape. It's not really, you know, certainly there are grade differences, but there's a lot of flat, and it's not rough, or really, you know, any kind of mountainous terrain, it's sort of gentle hills. And where this police department did make that specific request, and you think that, you know, that would certainly be doable, especially where you have a smaller crowd.
Correct.
And it's sort of, with a smaller crowd, it kind of makes it more fun when people are together and can kind of cheer all the other runners around. So I, you know, I think that would be an important consideration before we take the vote.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I certainly appreciate that.
It certainly was, in the note that I had in our packet, my impression was that was already approved, that was going to stay on the fairgrounds property. And Wendy Brown, from the event coordinator at Cape Cod Fairgrounds, had confirmed that this was going to stay on the fairgrounds property.
Good to know.
So thank you for raising that question, because that was my understanding.
That had been clarified with me. It certainly was an option, and I presented that to Wendy, obviously knowing about the cross-country events that happen there. Our biggest issue for me, in this, is not regarding the town. Now, it's getting back to our consumers, making sure they're aware that they would be doing a three-loop course within a fairgrounds, make sure they're, they're understanding what they are paying for and what they're getting as a result. And, you know, as far as advertising and false advertising, wouldn't want to undermine that. So we will certainly reach out tomorrow, if we approve tonight, and let them all know the status of the course.
Did the chief want to speak?
Chief, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, in the past, as, yeah, as, as he had said, we've been able to fill the detail because it was on another date. And, and we do get officers from the sheriff's department, Mashpee, Sandwich, whatever we can draw from for the event. However, Cape Cod Marathon is going to take that, because that, that event, we end up somewhere in the vicinity of 20, 22 offices, and they move around the town. So we will have those Sandwich, Mashpee, Falmouth officers tied up on that event. That's why we're unable to assist him with the running on that event. We did also speak with Wendy also about, I believe they want an officer on the fairgrounds for the alcohol event. We'll be able to perhaps assist with that. I may not be right in the very beginning, but once the marathon starts winding down, officers would move from there to that event, so they would have security there also. That's the reason why we requested it to be on the fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
I just want to add also, we, we always provide security details that we hire through a private security firm, so we wouldn't be without any security at the event if, if they weren't able to make it for the first little portion. And the first hour of the event is the race, so the alcohol doesn't get served until later.
And that's all insured, covered by insurance?
Yes, the town of Falmouth, Barnstable County Fairgrounds, and obviously our company are all covered on the policy.
Thank you. Before we vote, did you want to make that clear in the vote?
I think it's probably a good idea that it be contained on the fairgrounds itself, so happy to make that motion. Move approval with the condition that the race take place on the fairgrounds.
Well, the only thing is, we are not the granters of this special event. The only thing we're granting is the liquor license. So I would ask actually Matt to just promise us it's going to stay on the grounds. And if I get that promise, I'll feel much happier about approving the liquor license.
I think we've got that.
You have my word that we'll keep the race in, in the fairgrounds property.
With that, I move approval of the license.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Next item is to, under administrative orders, to vote to authorize the MIMA 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments. Board will probably recognize, we brought this to, we bring this to the selectment every year, and Kim Strom from the fire department has provided a brief summary of what's anticipated to be in this modest grant to continue the fine work that's done in emergency management. And I would ask the board's authorization to continue that.
Motion to approve the grant?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is to vote to accept the donation of AEDs to the Falmouth Police Department. This is actually is a, both a, a very risky story, but very, with a happy ending, and moving forward with Bill Green, pulling together some people to provide AEDs for every single one of the cruisers in the town of Falmouth.
And I think that Mr. Green is here. I don't know if you would, if you'd be able to just say a word.
Mr. Green, would you like to tell us a little bit about your story, about how your two hockey player friends?
Good evening to the board. Tom and just so to say, I'm happy to be here is pretty much an understatement. I was playing hockey last Thanksgiving at the Falmouth Ice Arena, as I always do. I play three or four times a week with the adult groups, and I suffered a sudden cardiac arrest in the middle of the game. That day, two things saved my life. One is that two of my line mates are Falmouth paramedics and ENTs, so they recognized my symptoms immediately and started CPR on the spot. And the second thing that really contributed to my life-saving was the fact that the Falmouth Arena has an AED, and we all knew it was there. So they deployed that, and within seven or eight minutes, got me going again. So it turned out to be a happy ending, which usually isn't the case. Once I recovered, I did some research, and I found out that the Falmouth cruisers don't have AEDs, which was kind of surprising and concerning to me. So I reached out to a lot of local business owners who live and do business in the town like I do, and are friends of mine, and business partners, and we raised enough money for, for 13 AEDs to put in the cruisers. So with your permission, we'd love to make that donation in the next couple of weeks. We're ready to go if you folks are willing, or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
And the story, the part of the story I love is that, I guess, when you contacted the company that wanted to provide, that you were getting the AEDs from, and they heard the story.
So it's great. Zoal is the manufacturer of the unit that actually saved me, and it's also the one that the other town departments use, the recreation department, obviously, the fire department. They heard the story, and they actually reached out to the distributor and offered to donate the pediatric patch for every unit that we buy. Therefore, if they have to be deployed on any infants or, or small children, they're going to donate those, which reduced the cost to us tremendously, which was really great. They also volunteered to come down and spend as much time as necessary with, with the folks over at the police department, so that they can train them and familiarize them with the units. The department's all trained to deploy these, but they'll get familiar with the units that we're going to supply.
And we have informed the finance committee of this, because there is the potential that if we have them and want to replace them, it could have future costs. And they have been notified, and as we are required by, by town meeting article.
They voted to affirm and recommend support for this initiative.
That's great.
Nice.
Thank you for that incredible story of gratitude, and really, you know, getting people together to, you know, do something great for the town, and to save more lives in the future.
And there's a piece I'd like to add, if you don't mind. With the consolidated dispatch that's coming forward, this will really stabilize, because the police department will be going to these calls, which is pretty important if these units are in the cruisers, because they'll be the first on scene most often. And time is obviously the essence. Thanks. Thank you, guys. Glad you made it, too.
Appreciate it.
Indeed. Thank you.
Going to make a motion to accept, to accept the donation of the AEDs to the Falmouth Police Department.
Second.
Motion second. Second, Mr. Brown, for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is to vote to accept a donation from the Old Stone Dock Association to the Beach Department donation account in the amount of $500 for flower boxes.
So move?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And thank you.
None, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next is to vote to approve an expenditure in the amount of $1,798.51 from the library donation account to purchase three display boards for the children's department.
Move approval? Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. And finally, assign a letter to the Massachusetts Office of Business Development in the support of funding of the Regional Economic Development Organization, a redo grant to the Cape Cod Economic Development Council, also known as the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. Economic Development Council, also known as the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. And we have a special event, a recurring event. This is a rosary rally at Peg Noonan Park on Saturday, October 15th, 2016. Do we have anyone from this organization who'd like to give a word or two about it?
During none.
During none.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion is second for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next, a report on the water testing exceedance. Mr. Jack, the DPW director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our water superintendent, Mr. Steve Rafferty, wasn't able to be here this evening. So I'm here to inform the board about most recent sampling results for trihalomethanes and exceedance of the allowable limits at 211 Knoppska Road. The value there is currently 82.85, which is just under 83 parts per billion. The allowable limit is 80 parts per billion. That's known as a locational running average. And I know that you'll see that in notifications and in press and everything. What it really means is four consecutive quarters on a running basis. So as you do a new sample in a current quarter, you drop off the oldest quarter and whatever that value was and average out the prior three with the current sample. So that's the allowable limits, the way they're prescribed by regulation. It's not just an individual location, but an actual running average. The current value that came back was 77 parts per billion in September and prior to that it was 71 parts per billion. So over the last six months, it's actually been below 80 parts per billion. However, we had two, two numbers in the 90s on the quarters prior to that. So when you average those in, that's why it's over 80. This is one of eight sampling locations that we do. We've been doing these in this manner since 2012 and I'm sure that some of you may remember when I presented to the board, as well as town meeting, on the Long Pond filtration plant, that there were two regulatory changes that had taken effect at that time. One was the surface water treatment rule, which made it very, very difficult to continue having the plant operate the way Long Pond was currently operating, which is basically disinfection only. So we were building a surface water plant as a consequence. The companion rule that changed at the same time, which was not an accident because the trihalomethanes are disinfection byproducts when you use chlorine and put it in contact with organic matter. So we had a disinfection facility with a high amount of chlorine that we're required to use in order to avoid disinfection. And then we have a high amount or a high loading of organic matter in Long Pond. So you put the two together and they form trihalomethane. So the bad news is that we exceeded the value again for this most recent quarter and we will be doing another sample before the end of the year. It's quite possible that those results will be below the 80 parts per billion, which is allowable. But the good news is that come spring, the new plant will be going online and it will dramatically reduce not only the organic load, but the disinfection as well as far as the utilization of chlorine. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there a chance that the going up from 71 to 77, which I don't think was expected because typically the summer months gets more water usage out there, pulls that through. But the fact that we had so, we were so dry would add to the organic material in the water, therefore adding more chlorine need to be put in the water to clear the algae and therefore also get the drought lengths up.
Yes, there are actually a number of factors that can come into play. Obviously, we're in a statewide drought. So when that happens, we pump more water. Most towns do. And our primary supply is Long Pond. Now generally provides anywhere between 50%, 70% of our water supply given any given time of year. But during a drought, we pump more. And so that's one factor. And then, of course, another factor is that when Long Pond's level goes down and we have the kind of heat that we did this summer, that proliferates algae in the pond. So it increases the organic load and then to compensate for that, we have to increase the disinfection load. So it's a double-edged sword.
Mr. Brown, question. Do you have any reasoning why the Knoppska Road location always seems to be in the worst shape? Is there a piping issue or is it the end of a line?
Actually, end of the line. We've monitored for trihalomethanes actually for many years. 2012 is a magic number only because that's when we had to start doing it differently. Before, we had a number of locations that we would collect the results and then they would all be averaged together. So therefore you could have a location on one part of town that could offset a value on the other part of town. Part of this major regulatory change was each independent site had to stand on its own. And then we were required to do an independent distribution system analysis, an IDSE. And the purpose of that was to identify specific locations where they had inordinate detention times. So those are the extremities of the systems, the dead ends or poor flow situations. So when you have chlorine plus organic matter plus additional time, the longer that that reaction time has, then the greater likelihood that you're going to form more trihalomethane. So Knoppska falls into that category. It's one of the extremities. Generally speaking, across the board for the other eight sites, they're usually around the mid 30s as far as parts per billion go, with the exception of Knoppska Road and Black Beach. Black Beach is about 60s. It runs in the 60s. And that too is an extremity. And both of those are served directly by Long Pond. One goes north, one goes south.
Would it be possible to improve that situation by more flushing in that area?
We do. We actually do. And yet this is, this is the result. So.
Okay, thank you.
And again, for nine more months.
Not quite that long. Actually, if, hopefully if the plant goes online.
Well, we'll still have to carry the three tests, you know, still the running average. So we'll still be stuck for a while carrying the bad numbers that we're currently in, but...
Yes. So there will be a public notification going out on October 7th, I believe, which will be a direct mailing to all of the users of the water system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item are the presentation of petition articles for our November 2016 annual town meeting. First, we're here on petition article 21. We do not take any votes on this tonight. We don't have discussion about it. It's just a chance for the petitioners to present their articles to us. Mr. Zwai?
Thank you. Could I go out of order because I need to fire up the system. I've got a few slides to show.
Certainly. We're going to move to article 36. This is an article as put forward by Mark Gordon and others. We've received a letter from them saying that they are planning to withdraw it and I think Mr. Gordon's here. Did you want to make any comment on it or, sorry?
I'd be glad.
No, Mr. Gordon.
So this article...
Mr. Mann, if you could just introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I'm Charles Mann. At the, I'm the president of the Quisett Association. At the time that the petition was presented, Mark Gordon was the president of the association. So I am here in my new role and that's why I'm here and he's not here. And the issue involves speed, your speed is radar driver.
Mr. Mann, I guess I would introduce, if you're just asking us to withdraw it, really a presentations...
No, I'm not making it, I was just, I thought it might be useful to know what the subject was being withdrawn.
Okay.
And anyway, it involves an issue of radar speed signs that were installed on Quisett Avenue without, in ignorance of the proper procedures to some extent and without going through the proper process. And at the time that the articles were, the deadline for the articles, we were still unclear as to what the process would be. And the thinking was at that time that we should make sure we could secure a place in the town meeting in the event that that proved to be an appropriate forum. And in the meantime, quite a bit has happened, including a meeting with the selectmen. And it is now back in the appropriate channels and moving forward as it actually should have done in the first place if we knew as much about it when we started as we have learned in the meantime. So we are now preparing a revised and much more detailed proposal for the Traffic Committee, Commission, and we'll be presenting that to them. So therefore, it seemed not appropriate to continue this as an article on the town meeting because it's being reviewed in other channels, which turn out to be more appropriate.
So are you withdrawing the article?
So we would like to withdraw the article from the town meeting.
Thank you.
But not, of course, withdrawing the issue from the other processes.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Just to be aware, at this point, it is still on the warrant. It can't be removed. Likely we'll make a recommendation of different postponement, but the recommendation could still be made on town meeting floor. A positive recommendation could be made. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
How was that timing?
Next is article 24, Mark Fineran. This, the article says, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to purchase or take by eminent domain a parcel of land with the buildings thereon known as 805 T-Ticket Highway, Goff, Mass., assesses parcel 340604B003F. Now are formally owned by Cape Cod Baptist Church, Inc., for use as a permanent or temporary senior center or in the alternative for affordable housing and accommodations for services to veterans and further to appropriate sum of money for the purpose to determine how the same shall be raised, including borrowing and by whom expended or do or take any action on this matter." Mr. Fineran?
Hi, Mark Fineran, precinct 6. Three years ago, when you announced the committee to cite a senior center, I applied and after some months I was interviewed. At that point in time, I brought this forward as either a permanent or a temporary solution or at least the easing of the crowding at the senior center. I and the proposal were rejected. I'm very familiar with the senior center. My mother and many of her friends attend there a couple of days a week and they are completely cramped in there. They're of the belief that they'll be dead before they ever have any kind of proper space. A couple of the classes that my mother participates in, they could have twice as many people, but they just simply do not have the room. The fact that it's been over three years and these people are still suffering is untenable. I mean, it's been at least a dozen years since we've known they need more space. As things look now, it's going to be even longer. The choice of the high school field for the senior center appears that it's going to have some strong opposition in town meeting. So this, obviously, if that's the case, it's going to push any kind of relief for these seniors even further down the road. Also, the amount of money you're talking for a new senior center, we still need a fire station and firefighters. I mean, this would be an excellent stopgap and allow us to address that as well. There's a second building there. I've approached, there's many veterans groups in town. I've approached a couple of them, not all of them, and they're ecstatic at the opportunity to have a place they could call their own. They basically meet at different places wherever they can at the present moment. Also, there's enough room there where if you chose, you could move the veteran services from downstairs to there where they'd all be under one roof and that would alleviate some of the problems we have here at town hall. We've been discussing that for years as well. They just simply need the space. It's cheap. It's $66 a square foot. You can't build a doghouse for $66 a square foot. And it's pretty much that simple. I mean, it would be immediate relief. And as I say, it appears that this senior center is further down the road than we ever expected, years at least. And also, the money you're talking, the town really can't afford. I mean, you're looking for an override. It's coming out of seniors' pockets. I mean, we already raise our taxes at two and a half percent as it is. That's 25% in 10 years. I mean, it doesn't seem to, seems to fall on deaf ears in town, but it, I mean, within town government, but it doesn't with the seniors themselves. And that's, I'll have a much more concise presentation for town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And since you're here, why don't we just move on to article 35? Is that's a good view?
Article 35 is just to ask the moderator to form a committee to review all these consolidations that we've had. They, well, a finance committee, I personally don't particularly care for that. I've been trying to get answers to questions for years in town meeting. I haven't got them. I know that if I'd asked Gary Anderson several times, I'm sure I would have gotten the answer from him. The harbor master in the DNR, you promised us savings. As it looks to me, there are no savings there whatsoever and it appears that they're, they're overworked. And now they have the shellfish propagation put on their plate as well. I know, I've heard stories from people who call the dog officer and they never can get them because they're out doing shellfish warrants or shellfish...
Relays.
...enforcements. I understand that, you know, they're animal control and shellfish are animals as well, but I don't think that's how they were intended to be utilized. They're, I think the whole thing needs to at least be reviewed. There's nothing wrong with oversight and it certainly seems like we're not getting what we promised there. The consolidation of the joint, the joint dispatch consolidation, I don't really know what's going on there. There was a decision last week. The state has tried to force the town manager to give up the consultant's reports to see if they were edited or not. I've heard several stories. I don't know which, how other way you can describe them because we don't have the information. I mean, it's public information. And it looks like we're going to spend some more money litigating that as well, bringing it in front of the attorney general. I think it's, needs a little bit of oversight. Couple of weeks ago, we came up with, he came up with a consolidation of the human services. I mean, it appeared that it was an ill-conceived notion and the library and the veterans portions of it were perhaps not even legal. I mean, renewal of all these things, a review of all these things is unclear. I mean, it's, I'm not sure that we're really getting provided what was claimed in any of these. And I just don't see how a little oversight isn't a good thing. As I say, it's hard to get information out of this town and we know little or nothing about any of these things. And I think we should know more. And I think that all should know that someone's looking over their shoulder. That never hurt either. Thank you very much.
All right. Next is article 21, Mr. Zwai. Do you want to describe it or should I read you what the article states? Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to advise the board of selectmen to appropriate $150,000 to finance water quality monitoring and operational support for a two-year nitrogen attenuation program in Warren's Pond to improve water quality and to meet to the degree possible the nitrogen total maximum daily load, TMDL. For that, ask to re complimenting the Marine and Environmental Services Department's ongoing shellfish production activities, using the shellfish nitrogen mitigation option and determine how the same shall be raised and by whom expended."
Thank you very much and thanks for reading that. I just want to say that first of all, I'd like to congratulate the Marine and Environmental Services Department and the Buzzards Bay Coalition on excellent family shellfish discovery day, which was on Saturday. And you can see how many people were out and this is sort of an offshoot of the water quality management program in West Falmouth Harbor and using shellfish for that purpose. So they were out harvesting the nitrogen, basically in the form of oysters and cohogs. And so this was, this is becoming... And so this was, this is becoming, hopefully, an annual event, and hopefully, this will happen across the town. Again, thanks, Doug, for reading this. This may look like a little bit, as that great sage, Joe Givero, said, you know, it's like deja vu all over again. Well, this might be considered, this is sort of, is very similar to Article 26 from last spring, but a lot has happened since then, and including the approval last spring of Article 13, which has to do with shellfish production and not so much with water quality management, which is what this is a complement to Article 13. This is the budget breakdown from Article 13. As you can see in it, there was an element of growing about a half a million oyster seed for seeding in Bournes Pond. That is underway right now, and or is, and will be planted in Bournes Pond. But one element that's missing from this budget is the water quality monitoring. It's only a production dynamic, which is very important and very critical to the town and to the commercial and recreational shellfishers, but that part is, is not included, was not included in that. So this, this plan, this article would include that, and this is how it basically breaks down. There'd be the water quality monitoring, and it's expensive. It's about $60,000 a year, would be started next spring, in May, and go through October next year, and then there'd be operational support with that, which, which could be, would be a help to the department. And so the total per year is $75,000, and for, for calendar year 2007, 2008, the total is $150,000. The, so this very much complements the ongoing program and, and with regard, particularly with regard to water quality management. One thing about this, too, is that there was a concern raised about, well, can they, can the shellfish live in Bournes Pond? Well, there are oysters in Bournes Pond at present. There are not many, but there are quite a few. Some of them are very large. And the water quality condition in Bournes Pond is very similar to what is in Lonny's Pond in Orleans. And so it's an open area, so the food, and in Lonny's Pond, 200,000 of Falmouth's oysters were moved there last, last spring, and they're growing very well at about 13,000 per acre. The original proposal was about 10,000 per acre for Bournes Pond, so they're doing well at 13,000. They expect to increase that density over time. One other element I wanted to mention is that the, the article itself has already been reviewed by Town Council. The language, it's before the Finance Committee, and it's also been sent to the Bournes Pond Village Association and the Coastal Ponds Management Committee, and I sent you all some additional background material on it from the Shellfish Working Group that really came up with the plan. And the Shellfish Working Group included Steve Layton, Matt Patrick, myself, Sia Karpis, and Chuck Martenson. We did a detailed analysis and came up from this analysis, really, with the best pond, for a lot of different reasons, was Bournes Pond, to do this sort of full-scale demonstration. And ultimately, we would see a phased approach, starting with next, we'll find out next summer if it's worth going on, and then we would continue or stop, but in terms of survival of shellfish and the way, the effects that it might have. So this is sort of a detailed analysis of, of all the estuaries, and then there were a lot of other elements that were considered in this, and that included cost, as well as, you know, aesthetics, accessibility, even land ownership. A lot of factors were in, disease issues. A lot of things were considered in coming up with this decision from a very detailed decision matrix that Sia Karpis put together, and we came up as, as the working group with that analysis, including, again, the costs for, for 14 estuaries in Falmouth. At the September 1st Water Quality Management Committee meeting, Chuck Martenson made this statement. All this stuff, meaning the plan in this, in the Shellfish Working Group report, dovetails really well with the aquaculture planning piece, really well, because it, first of all, tells us how well shellfish will do in an area such as Bournes Pond. Bournes Pond is one possible place where we can be looking into doing some work, you know, with public-private partnerships along those lines. So it's incredibly important on a number of different levels to realize how much the relationships, the people who handle the gear, with the homeowners in the area, how well the animals do, you know. You know, you start to look at things like that. You can look at even larger animals being used. There's so much beyond just the information that we're looking at. This information is critically important for, for that piece, as well as, which hasn't been talked at all about here, but to us, it's hugely important. And then Eric Kirkington kind of summarized the outcome of the meeting, and his statement was, "I started out needing to be convinced that Bournes Pond was the best place to be doing this thing. Actually, I see a lot of useful stuff coming out of this." And so basically, the reason it's being brought before this fall town meeting is that for preparation and contracting needs, the timing of this fall meeting is important to allow for adequate advanced planning so we can get the monitoring and other activities going in the spring, along with the, as the animals, which are being seeded now, will begin to have an impact on the water quality. So this is basically the, the concept behind it. The reason that this is a petitioner's article, as Eric stated at the meeting, is that it was, the whole discussion only could come up the day before the warrant closed, and so he said, "Well, it could be a private, a private article." So here it is. So I ran out and got signatures and worked with several people, but this is really the, the outcome of it. So I'm hoping that you will support this, and thank you.
Will you be making the presentation on town meeting floor or the Water Quality Management Committee?
Pardon me, I didn't, I didn't.
Will you be presenting this article or will the Water Quality Management Committee be?
Well, we'll see at that time. It might be a group of us will be doing it, maybe some others from the, from the working group, but I'm not, at this point, we'll be discussing this on Thursday as well, and I'm not sure what the outcome of that may be, but, but it will be discussed on Thursday as an agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fineran?
Can I comment or no?
I probably should not have started opening the door for that.
Then that's fine.
Right.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, if you'd get the lights for us, please. Next item is request to maintain a private raft in Mayor's Pond off of Town property. Mr. Lebert?
Christopher Ledpers, 99, Town Hall Square. I'm here tonight with my client, Sofia Kojowski. I saw how warmly received Mr. Green was with his donation to the town, so I'd like to couch this application in terms of a, of a donation to the town. Since 1978, Ms. Kojowski, who lives on Wampum Road, has maintained a raft in Mayor's Pond. It has been used by countless people in that neighborhood, probably a good number of people who do not reside in that neighborhood. I'm not all that familiar with the area myself until recently, when I went out, took a look around, and had conversations with my client. Mayor's Pond, 28-acre parcel of water. This area that we're talking about, the reason why we're here tonight is because Wampum Road, where Ms. Kojowski lives, actually abuts the town land, the Mayor's Pond Reservation property. It's a, gosh, 100 and some odd acre parcel that the town controls under the purview of the Conservation Commission. She abuts a corner of the property, and I, I don't know what she submitted. I didn't make the application tonight, but I just drew a couple of little X's, if I may approach.
Sure.
I put an X on Wampum Road where Ms. Kojowski lives, and I put an X in Mayor's Pond where she'd like to maintain a float. And there are other rafts out in Mayor's Pond, and I studied to educate myself as to exactly what goes on in Mayor's Pond, and I was, I was sort of surprised. There is a town landing there, there's a beach over there on Patty Road, there's clearly swimming that goes on, there's canoeing. You go online, and there are fishing websites that say trout fishing at Mayor's Pond. It's actually a very extensively used property recreationally. I have another picture of the raft. There's been a series of rafts over the years. I have another picture of the raft that is currently the one that she would like to maintain at the property.
We actually have these.
Have you had, I'm sorry?
Yes.
So I put together a memorandum yesterday after familiarizing myself with Ms. Kojowski and so forth, and I had it brought over today. Bottom line is this, she's quite an interesting woman. She's a chemist, born in Poland, pre-World War II, went through World War II, actually sustained some injuries in a bombing in World War II. But she came to this country in 1976, and to Falmouth, where she worked as a chemist through the Oceanographic. In 1978, she bought her property at 37 Wampum. She has always been very heavily interested in physical fitness. She's enjoyed very good physical health throughout her life, and she says it's sort of a Polish tradition. So I've been educated to the process. So why are we here? We're here because traditionally, you see these floats or rafts associated with waterfront properties. In other words, I live on Mayor's Pond, and I make an application to the harbor master for a raft, and, you know, apparently, if, if he feels it's, it's proper, it gets granted. This is a little bit different because the use, Ms. Kojowski does not front, her property does not front on Mayor's Pond. So how did this start? Well, back in 1978, the town did not own this parcel. Mr. Francis DeDario owned the parcel, and he entered into an agreement with Ms. Kojowski, allowing her to maintain a float in the north-northwestern portion of Mayor's Pond. And like you said, like I said, it's been a continuous activity for now 38 years, if that's, that's correct, if my math is correct. So we're not asking for anything new, but we're asking for permission because apparently it was recognized that this needed a permit, and here she is. My understanding is that, that the process would be to hopefully satisfy this board Concom, and I know you have some recommendations from Concom in your file and from Town Council. I just came on board on this very, very recently, so those are things I'm going to have to take a look at. But look at your zoning, AGA. One of the very first things you're going to find when you look at your zoning bylaw is permitted use floats. AGA, that's where this property is zoned. I am aware that it is in the, I guess we call it the Zone 1 Public Water Supply. I looked at those regulations through the CMR. I don't see anything inconsistent with that zone with this proposed use. So I thought to myself, what do you really end up with? You have a great big pond here, 28-acre pond. It would appear to me, based on everything I've seen online and that the town has put out, this is the pond that we're encouraging use of. It has a, it has a landing, there is, there's literature out there and websites out there talking about canoeing, talking, I don't believe powerboats are allowed out there, but there is clearly boating out there, there are rafts out there, there's swimming out there. I took a ride down Patty Lane today, and there was a beach, and said, "No lifeguard on duty now," but obviously, people swim there. So it is our hope that the town will accept this gift that Sofia Kojowski wants to grant to the town, which is a raft that the town would be, the townsfolk would be able to use. She's not making this just for her own use. She says it's open to the town to use, or anybody who would want to use it. If you look at what it abuts, it abuts all of this conservation land where there are walking trails. I don't know if you have a copy of the map
We do.
...that shows that there's parking out there, and so on and so forth. It doesn't appear to be inconsistent with anything that I think we're encouraging when the town acquired that land for conservation purposes. We think it's a win-win. I know you have some recommendations and probably some things you want to talk about. I'd be happy to have my client come up here and address some, some issues. We're hopeful that the board might look favorably upon this application. And I can assure you, if there's some concern about liability or whatnot, I personally made some calls to her insurance representatives today. They say that's not a problem. We can come up with any kind of a, of a binder of a policy that's going to be satisfactory to the town, and I would think Mr. Sussow or, or the board itself could review it if that really was an issue. Like, like I said, the town encourages activity on that pond right now, so hopefully, hopefully we can encourage a little bit more.
You confuse me tremendously with the notion that's being given to the town, because if it's a gift to the town, we're now responsible for it, we would be maintaining it, we'd be pulling it in and out, and we'd have complete control over it. And I'm not sure that's really, I mean, I think, I wasn't sure if you were really serious that that's what you're now asking, whether the town wants to accept this donation.
In a perfect world, Ms. Kojowski wants to do all the things you've just described.
But we can't do that without a program.
And I understand that. So that's why we are here, because I do understand that if, if, if Ms. Kojowski does not front on the, on the pond, she, I guess you could say is a, although she's extremely close, she's done in the butter, so she has no more rights to that pond than, than I do. So yes, that is something that, I guess, in a sense, we are asking to accept this gift with conditions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
I see this list of neighbors. Are these people that are in support of this? Do we have any testimony of that?
I would, there was a list of neighbors, Mr. Brown is asking, have you called those neighbors? Are they in support or in opposition? Do you understand the question? The list of neighbors that you supplied to the board, do, do they have a position on, on your application?
Do they support it?
They, they always were coming to that for years, 38 years. So they, they changed because they tell the house that they are little people.
You should probably come up here, okay?
Sofia, come up here. You supplied to the board a list of neighbors, and Mr. Brown is asking you, do you know whether or not those names support what you're asking for tonight?
Okay. These are people that share the raft with you?
Some of them are gone, but because it was people from through this 38 years.
Okay.
But there are, yes. They, they, they still come in, and some of younger generation is coming, and they always enjoy the place. And what I'm asking, no matter what you offer me, which condition, I have to, I have to, I have to have to obey.
Right.
Yes. So I do, I am going to do, I'm going to do everything possible. I, what I'm asking, after this eight, 38 years, it's very difficult for me to, to understand that I cannot go and enjoy the place and also see these young people who are not going to the mall or somewhere where else, they're swimming, they are in sports, some of them go to attend the swimming club, and they were very good skiers, too. So it was maybe not immediate help offered, but it's because they joined together and they spent more, a lot of time there, and they in school, and after school, and right now, they, they always go see each other and come to swim, even they are adults.
Right.
So, and for me to go after 30 years, being, having possibility to go through the woods and, and be there, and right now to ask neighbors for mercy, for, for their kindness to go to swim or to use the raft to dive or to use the raft to, it would be very difficult. So if you, if I can, under any conditions, if I can, if this raft, not me, but if we can work together and find out what condition has to be applied for today.
And so I think what she's saying is that she understands that the town has to accept some form of responsibility here, because this is essentially town waters, if you will, access by town land, but she's prepared to accept conditions that the board may feel unnecessary to, to safeguard the town.
But I guess Mr. Brown's question is, all this letter says is that these people have used it. They have not been asked, do they support it? They have just used it in the past.
Yes.
But it's not a testimony that these people are
Those who are here around, because some of them are going Those who are here around, because some of them are going.
I think she's suggesting that if they're using it, they're probably in support of it.
Well, they haven't been asked.
Apparently not.
I guess my concern would just be along those lines. I mean, if it's been there for all this time and it hasn't been a problem, I understand the land changed hands, but we're talking about a raft and a pond. I mean, it doesn't seem particularly, I mean, it's fairly small structure. You know, if we have some feedback from neighbors as to whether or not it is a problem, I guess that would be helpful to understand where to go with it. I don't have a, I understand some of the complexities of it, but I also think that if you have an individual who has contributed to her small kind of community by having something that is recreational and maintaining it, again, unless we're hearing, and maybe it has been problematic in that neighborhood, I don't know, because we don't have that input. So my perspective is that I would like to just have a bit more input as to how this raft has been received or used with the neighbors.
Ms. Moran?
I have a little bit of a different take. I think that this is a wonderful thing that Mr. Dodario allowed for you to do, and that, as you suggest, maybe there's a possibility of another neighbor making, you know, a similar agreement to allow the raft off of their property, for them to insure it and them to ask the town for, you know, to proper license or permit, whatever's required. In this case, I don't think the town has the ability really to give you what you're asking for. First of all, in terms of, you know, just when you think about going forward, for people to, you know, ask the town, you know, I'd like to, you know, I live on Rock Hollow, I'd like to have a raft in Jenkins Pond, you know, it just seems to me very impractical that the town would take on all of that liability and insurance expense and inability to staff in terms of lifeguarding and all the things that the town normally does. And I think that's why the regulations are the way they are. If the town owns the land, like whatever, say it, Old Silver or something, and the town wants to have a raft, then the town, you know, is right there as the landowner to supply the proper insurance and oversight. If, however, we were to start granting permission for folks that weren't right on the water, it's sort of a deluge of different raft situations where they're so much further from the property that there would be a lot more expense and oversight to the town. So I think you're, my view is that you're asking us for something that we really can't give you. But I think that the idea, maybe Mr. Lebhart's raised it, of, you know, you've done a great thing for the neighborhood in allowing this, you know, being the center of all the children and folks enjoying it, but now with Mr. Dodario's situation, having given the property to the town, then maybe it's time for someone else to take on that responsibility. Maybe you could ask other neighbors that they might be interested. So I just don't see we could do it.
I do want to remind the board that the reason this all came up is because the Conservation Department had received several complaints about this raft, and that's what started the whole process.
But I'm not asking for private raft, it's mine raft. I'm asking to remain there out there, and all the time it was so many people, and people from all over the place are coming here, because there is a very nice slope at the lake, and but very limited area to stay, because when water is high, there is a tree are covered, so you don't have a place to sit, you only can go to water and that's it. And having this place, you stay there, you stay on the sun, you watch, you teach children how to swim, how to dive. So it's a wonderful thing, and I was thinking, I will take care of that, for my pleasure and my family. But as long as the raft will be there and if there will be, like publicly approved or public will be coming, maybe there is a possibility to keep the raft.
So I noticed that there are some properties on Wampum Road that do abut the pond, where they could probably have permission if they wanted to. What if you had a neighborhood association of some sort that would gain support for this and bring that, and one of those members...
They have to be a member of the association.
Well, it wouldn't have to be a formal association, but just a list of members that show letters of support and that show a commitment to this, then perhaps we could have the proper permission? So maybe if you talk with some neighbors...
I could ask.
That might be something that could be done. I noticed Wampum Road, maybe, I see you have other neighbors from Harriet and what's the other road, Capricorn? Maybe it would be a sort of a neighborhood thing? Because I'm in favor of neighbors who don't have frontage to have use of our waterways, especially in a property that has town-owned land next to it. It sort of seems a shame to deny these neighbors' access if we can find a way to make it legal.
In particular, I'd like to have the neighbors who are the closest to this float making sure they are in approval of it.
Absolutely.
Because that's, it may be those are the neighbors who are saying, we have a float right off of our property, we don't like it, and I'd like to know that they do like it.
Right.
And so I agree that if we could get that nearest neighbor to say, it's off of my property, I can support it, but...
Right.
Could I ask this? I mean, bear in mind, this is the area tonight, this would have been an opportunity for those very neighbors to be here if they were in fact in opposition, but I hear what you're saying. Would the board consider continuing the hearing and seeing what we might be able to bring back by way of neighborhood input? I am mindful that Ms. Kojowski, again, does not live in the immediate association. I believe there is a homeowners association around that pond, but to your point, Mr. Brown, and I agree, she's just a spin of land away from being an abutter to the pond. There is a parcel in between, it's a very large, 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 large parcel that the town of Falmouth owns, but this area of land that the town owns between my client and the pond is very, very small. I hear what Mr. Jones is saying, perhaps we could seek out the most immediately affected. And if that's the concern, you know, neighborhood opposition, well, I think that's exactly why we have these public areas, to see who's in favor and who's not. We'd be happy to come back. Might the board consider continuing this a few weeks and giving us a chance to see what we could do?
Ms. Moran?
I'd still be stuck on the fact, I don't see the power for us to grant it, so maybe if we also had Town Council advise us that we would be able to grant it in this situation.
There was a memorandum from Town Council, it's somewhere in your file, I assume you have it, if you don't, I have it. That issue did not come up in terms of your ability to grant it, but I think what came up was, again, to the point that you made, and I think Mr. Jones made, there are concerns, and we recognize that liability, you know, and maintenance and costs and things of that nature. Those are all things I think Ms. Kojowski is trying to say to the board, however it wants to condition, and she'd be willing to meet. I might also add, she'd be willing to have it reviewed, you know, you go through one year and you see how you make up. So those are things that I anticipated coming up tonight, and like I said, we did speak to her, in fact, I think she has an insurance binder with her tonight for so many million dollars' worth of coverage, that type of thing. Those types of details we'd be able to work out. The, I guess you could view it as the town being the applicant. I think you can do that. The town can say, we own the land and we own the water and we want to put in a float. I don't really see it as a question of whether we can. I think it's a question of whether we think it's a good idea, and that's why we're here, to discuss it.
If we went with that route of it being the town, we would then have a lifeguard or pull the float. We wouldn't maintain a float without a lifeguard. And so the only place we have floats are when we have lifeguards there and we're actually manning it. And so I don't see how we could put a lifeguard on that beach if it were town-owned float.
No, go ahead. I was just going to make a motion, so go ahead.
Just one more thing of information. So these are licensed by the harbor master, even though it's in a pond. It says that there is provisions for bottom anchored floats within public waters. Maybe, these could be authorized annually by the local harbor master, and the harbor master's opinion was, as long as we could come to agreement with the Conservation Commission, which so far they have not, but if they could, it could, seems it could be legally done, but so far the conservation is not convinced that it's a good idea, but if there was enough support, maybe they would consider it again, I don't know.
No, go ahead.
Okay, well, I guess the problem I have with this is a precedent, as I said, because this means that anybody can come to us and ask to put a raft in one of the great ponds or even one of the lesser ponds, and where do we draw the line? I mean, I understand how we could accommodate somebody that actually owns property on a pond, and I think that's the way it's been set up and done in the past. But my question really is, have you approached any of the people who abut the pond and asked them, would they be willing to take that raft and allow your guest to use it? Because that's the simplest solution in my mind. And so I'm really bothered by the precedent of essentially allowing people to apply to put a raft off of town-owned land, unsupervised, uncontrolled. And the other question is the whole issue of accessibility. My understanding in going to, participating in the Conservation Commission, there was some question about whether there weren't exclusionary signs that were hung on this raft that said no trespassing. Was that the case?
But if...
No, I'm sorry, I answered the question. Was there a no trespassing sign on the raft?
What, say again?
No trespassing or...
No suspect?
He's asking you if in the past there was signs that said do not trespass, that sort of thing.
Oh, yes, but this was a reason for that. It was the last year, the raft was taken by strangers to the other part of the pond. And I talked to my neighbors also for using the raft, let's put this sign, I didn't know that would be some kind of suspicion that I'm using, that I'm asking for, or using too much to my raft, different only for myself. Also, so if we put this sign that these people, strangers, if they come, they will not take the raft, because I was going swimming to the one other side, pushed the raft six times, and we were checking every day, is the raft here, is the raft here? No, on the other side. Last time we rented a kayak, it was from somebody, to find the raft.
I think perhaps in Poland they hit a raft differently than we do here, I think we can see that. But to your point, Mr. Patterson, I understand precedent, but there's 38 years here, 38 years of doing this, and I'm not aware of any other situation where this situation really arises. I mean, is one exception precedent, you know, throughout the entire town. I understand, I've been in board meetings where this issue always comes up, and I hear boards talk about, well, we'll do this, and it's about, you know, nothing we do is precedent setting and so on and so forth. We're talking about something, and again, please, you know, just think about this logically for a second, it's been going on for 38 years. She has pictures, she can document it, that sort of thing. Doesn't change the fact that why we're here and what we need permission to do and so on and so forth, but look around, well, I guess everybody in here is probably at least 38 years old, except Ms. Braga.
Older.
But it's been going on a long, long, long time.
Well, be careful, it's been unlicensed for 38 years. Just because it's been going on, unlicensed and not approved for 38 years, doesn't make it right.
And that's, I agree, I can't argue.
Ms. Braga?
I would just, in light of the fact that I think we have an individual before us who really is here in good faith, has maintained a raft for almost, you know, four decades, allowed other people to use it, I fully agree that there are problems with this, but I would move that we continue the hearing to perhaps give the applicant time, now that she has counsel, to see if there are some of the suggestions that have been brought up tonight, namely speaking with some of the direct abutters, to see if an arrangement can be made with them so that it's a clean process, it's not overly complicated, and that this raft that seems to have been enjoyed by a number of people can continue to be there. So I would move that we continue the hearing to a later date so that she has an opportunity to perhaps pursue some of the suggestions offered by the board tonight.
Second?
On the idea of move, of continuing the hearing, the reason I'm not supportive of that is, if there's no hearing which I'm going to vote that someone who doesn't abut the property can maintain a raft on the pond. It would be a different hearing if a different person came forward who has property on the pond and want to maintain it. That wouldn't be the same hearing, we'd actually have to have a different hearing to allow them to do it. And that's the hearing I'd rather say, let's, you know, maybe we continue it because we're not going to make a decision to be supportive, but really the hearing I'd rather have is this one withdrawn by the applicant and have her come back, or have somebody else come back who owns property on Wampum Road that abuts Mare's Pond and says they are willing to be the sponsors of this raft. Unfortunately, the idea that's been moved around about makes me more concerned about it, because we can't actually support her ownership of this raft that's not legally there, and we wouldn't be able to go and say, no, we're going to protect her property when someone does want to move it. I mean, they didn't know whose raft it was, they thought it was a raft that could be used, moved around. It's a tough thing for us to enforce the ownership of a raft that we haven't approved of, so...
But obviously it shows that it's popular.
Right, and to Mr. Patterson's point, lots of people would like to have one.
Right. Well, that's a good point, but this is different, I think, because it's existing. I don't think it really sets precedent where, I think she, it seems that it was put there in good faith with permission from the previous owner. Now that we've come along as the new owners, I think that's a special case.
Okay.
And I would say this, again, it was not permitted, so I guess I would have to say shame on my client, but it was in the open. It was, in legal terms, we say open and adverse and notorious and that type of thing. It was there, it was as clear as day with countless people using it, including in plain view of all of those neighbors for 38 years.
But the reason it's here is because of complaints.
Apparently so. And you know something, and I'd be the first to say, you know, if the neighbors most affected by it don't want it, then you're not going to see me in any future, Harry, asking for it. I'm pretty confident that's not going to be the case, but I'd ask for an opportunity to come back and at least investigate that.
Ms. Moran?
I have to agree, you know, on a more specific and, you know, kind of narrow basis. I think the chair is correct, because all of the suggestions that we're discussing that were subsumed in Megan's motion really have to do with getting in a butter to make the offer, so it really would be a separate hearing. So I think I'll take back my second.
If the board's mind is made up that it would not want to be a party to this raft, then I guess I would have to agree, we would have no choice but to go through and abutter. In a sense, we're trying to partner up with the town on this one and say, you know, we'll carry the liability and we'll carry the expense. And this is a hybrid. I mean, we clearly recognize, we don't abut, and this is town land, so, you know, the issues are right on, exactly what Mr. Jones is outlining. We're trying to alleviate that concern as best we can with any conditions the board might feel are appropriate.
The other option would be for us to continue it with the hope that another name was going to get added to the application. So it would be...
That was my thought, is just not to complicate.
Kojowski and the neighbor.
If we could do that, we'll, I'll have a chat with the client and we'll talk to some neighbors, we'll see if we can do that. And obviously, if we can't garner any support, then I think the handwriting is pretty much on the wall.
Do you still want to withdraw your second?
No, I think that that makes sense.
Okay.
I think that's what Megan was saying.
Yes, to amend the applicant.
Yep.
To the application.
Can I ask a question? Because I understand that other people can ask to have a float in this, which is also important, but if the raft won't be mine, won't be under town umbrella, nobody will ask for that, because it's not, they all can, they can, don't have any reason to ask for that. This will be, if the raft will...
It may also alter the location of the raft, because if we're relying on a neighbor, we're probably no longer talking about the location that it's been maintained at, but maybe we could work out some of those bugs and try to get back... maybe we could work out some of those bugs and try to get back to the board.
Sam.
You're asking to partner with the town, we're asking you to partner with somebody who actually has property on the pond, and locate it off of their property, and if you want to pay for the liability insurance, so they don't have to take that on, I think we would welcome that.
But I have to walk around the lake to, to find somebody.
It's, it's a location thing, you understand, if, if you look at the map.
It's different, different, for, you know, and some people who using the raft, they were, they have children and grandchildren, the children are coming from Chile, because they are in Chile right now. First thing, they go to the pond, and they, they, they fish, and they enjoy that, and they make connection with the other kids, it's really wonderful. You couldn't imagine, during this time, each summit was full of nice people. And right now, on September 12, I went down, and I saw 15 people there, with children, and using, jumping, learning how to jump, and enjoying, and older people were also swimming there. I didn't know them.
And in hindsight, I think it would have been nice had she thought to try to enter into some negotiations with Mr. D'Addario before, and maybe carved out a little sliver for her, her benefit. You know, the thinking was, and maybe it's wrongly received, maybe not, the thinking was, this is kind of like recreational land, I mean, it's, it's conservation land, but this pond, I mean, this is kind of the area where we thought, you know, if it was ever going to be approved, this would be it, you know, it's where it should be. To, to go in with a neighbor drastically alters what she does. You know, Wampum is not right on the pond, she would have to go down another road, presumably cut through yards and this type of thing, and it, and it would also take away the public interest of it. She's trying to say, if you are using the trails and the conservation land, at the end of the trail, is a raft waiting for you? That's kind of the thinking here, and if we could alleviate the liability concerns, and I have very little doubt we could, that's the, that's the gist of the application.
So she accesses the pond via the town water supply.
She does. If you, I don't know if you have a, a map, Mr. Jones, but...
Yep, we do.
Wampum, I ask you, I might be able to provide you with even a better one.
Well, we have a good map.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
Shows the float location.
She is north of the pond, I'm going to guess, the width of about five or six of those house lots, so she actually, when she goes out her backyard, she, she ends up in the town parcel and probably has to walk, I'm going to guess, you know, a couple hundred feet, that type of thing.
I asked you, when I talked to Mr. D'Addario, this is why, why also I was thinking, when I came here, and it was, was a wood here, plain wood, and the house, it was my first house built on Wampum Road. We chose, I, I chose this place exactly because I wanted to swim, and I wanted to skate, and have this top closed, then it was difficult to get in, so I start to find who owns the land. I don't think anybody, like I came, this is a bush, and this is a lake, I can go. So I tried to find, and I found, it was Mr. D'Addario, and I found the address, and I drove to Boston, and I met him, and I asked him if he gave me a permission to make a path, because there wasn't any path. I put some ribbons to go around the trees, and nothing could be damaged there, and, and we make a path, and the path exists to this place, to, 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 to now days.
Just for your family use, or is it used, Mr. Levert suggested it was a conservation path that a bunch of people use, or is it just your family?
Yeah, I can, you, of course, I know that can use that right now, because now it's conservation, but it was before, it was private. When the conservation, when the town bought the place, I spoke to, to Conservation Commission, and before I spoke to them, because we were talking about this, having something like entrance to the raft or so, and because Mr. D'Addario was responsible for that, and even when the land was bought, Conservation Commission people called me, saying that there is a, there is a, the situation is, is solved, because if we own the place, you can have a raft and stay there. And until now, I did not know that I really, I am not authorized to have a raft. I didn't know, because I didn't...
Ms. Braga.
I, I just think all of this is more of a reason, perhaps, to continue it, I think Mr. Levert's just came on board, and it sounds like there are some other things to maybe take a look at, some other folks to speak to, so...
Okay, we have a motion and second for the discussion.
The, the last thing I like to say, the town landing, which is there very nearby, is so steep, doesn't have any rails, doesn't have steps, so is very rarely used, and very difficult to use, very difficult. So the, the entrance to the place, which I have, I'm using, it will be much safer.
Ms. Finer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Finer in Precinct 6. My youngest child will be 27 in January, and all through high school, she had a friend that lived down there, and I, I used to actually like to bring her there, because it was a nice neighborhood, nice kids, and some days, literally dozens of kids would be using this raft, and I mean, it was a constant and regular thing, and I never knew of any trouble that was made there, whatever, it, it kind of seems that if it's some way that you could continue this, uh, access, it would be good, because it is a considerable distance for people to travel, and I mean, you know, like I said, it was, it was a popular neighborhood thing, and by all rights, it sounds like it still is. Thanks.
For the discussion, we have a motion and second to continue this, I don't think to a date specific, but to when the applicant might be able to come back with some support of the nearest neighbor.
I'd just like to say, I completely understand the concerns of the board as well, there's, there's some legal issues here, it's, you know, it's a popular thing apparently, but, you know, we're going to try to see what we can do to appease the board.
Okay. All those in favor of continuing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Continue that, so we hear back from you.
Do we have a date?
When you're ready. No date in specific, just when you feel like it.
Oh, so we'll contact the, Mr. Suso's office?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Next item is the signed variance for Falmouth 55 LLC and Fred Wrennaker, 55 Davis Straits, this is where the old mobile station used to be.
Hi, good evening.
To the applicant.
For the record, my name is Heather Dedco, and I'm a representative from Patterson Sign, and with me is Melissa Faraday, she's a representative from Enterprise. So the request before the board tonight is for signed variance, specifically a variance of four square feet for a ground sign. Enterprise currently is moving from their location at Worcester Court to 55 Davis Street, and with a November 12 opening date, that's the anticipated opening date. We have applied for sign permits for the wall signs, the door vinyls, and for re-vinyling the existing canopy on site, and those permits were approved by Design Review and by the Building Department. So our request before the board only concerns the ground sign, and Enterprise would like to install a 16-square-foot, oh, I'm sorry, a 20-square-foot ground sign where 16-square-feet is allowed.
Okay. Do you want to explain why you want 20 square feet, which is fairly clear in your letter, but if you'd put that forward, that would be great.
Sure. A couple of reasons, the existing mobile sign is a pre-existing non-conforming sign at 24-square-feet, so the sign cannot be altered or reused in any way, it needs to be removed. It's also in disrepair, so it, the original, the original thought was that maybe they could just utilize the sign box, remove the sign box, and put something else in its place, but the existing structure, the pole and the foundation, is in disrepair, so it's, it's better to remove the entire structure. And Enterprise utilizes a rectangular shape, that's their standard corporate look, and basically, if they could pick something and use something that's in their existing sign family, that would be the most cost-effective way to go, and, you know, looking towards the future, if the sign is in disrepair and they need to replace the face, they have a face from the sign family, it's not a custom build, it's not a custom installation, and it's not a custom replacement, so that's, that's their thinking about the sizing. The text area of the sign is only 10-square-feet, if you, if you just measure the text, so it's a very, very small sign, it's non-intrusive, it will be located at the same location as the existing mobile sign, it'll be landscaped, will not pose any visibility issues on-site at all, it will be internally illuminated, the lettering lights, the background is okay. So only the lettering will light during the hours that the sign is illuminated.
Questions from the board? Mr. Brown.
What are you using now at the other location for a sign?
We are in a multi-tenant location right now, on Worcester Court, and it's a multi-tenant sign, it's not illuminated, and it's a very small sign, because this, for, this is for the whole building, for business.
Okay. Ms. Moran.
What color is the illumination at night?
It's, it's white, the lettering is white, so the lettering will shine through the E in the green portion, and it'll shine through the black.
Thank you.
Oh, I also would like to note that the sign will meet the overall height requirement, and it will meet the clearance requirement as well.
Mr. Patterson.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just bothered, because this is such a commercial strip through here, and it's so different from our Main Street stretch, you know, so I, I don't like to see us expand the allowed limit in this situation. I, I don't see why you can't scale it down to actually fit within the 16-square-foot regulation. I, I don't see that as a, a huge encumbrance for a company like Enterprise. So I'm, I'm bothered by it, I really don't want to see signs growing inside signs, you know, we're trying to keep a kind of a New England town, small town ambiance and atmosphere, and when you see these tiny signs going up, I mean, we've got the Christmas tree plaza there, you know, it's just sign after sign after sign, and that's the reason we have these regulations, quite honestly. And so I'm, I'm not in favor of giving you that extra four-square-feet, when I think it's not asking an awful lot to fit within our regulations, and I think with a, internally lighted sign, it's going to be quite visible without scaling it up to a larger size.
Sure, so with staying, staying with our sign family and doing our standard two-by-five sign, which is the 20-square-feet...
Could you speak a little closer?
Oh, sure, sorry about that. It actually, having the, they're pre-made already, and they're in our sign family, so it allows us to keep our costs down for our customers, because we don't actually have to have them custom-made. So everything that we pre-order from the factory, and everything that is pre-made, we, you know, get at a discounted price, because they make so many of our signs nationwide, and that helps us keep our rental costs down for our customers, which obviously then go to the community here in Falmouth, and that we can, you know, lower our prices. The other thing is, as Heather said, that the, the Enterprise logo is actually only 10-square-feet. Right now, the sign is 24-square-feet, and the only reason why I chose not to go for a variance, to use the existing sign, is one, because we found out it was non-conforming, and then second, because it's in disrepair. So it is actually still smaller than what is currently there, and mobile just closed last December, it hasn't even been a year yet, which, you know, that was illuminated brighter colors than what we would be doing. We also do not keep our signs on all night long, I usually have them set off around like 11 o'clock, so that, you know, people passing through the middle of the night won't see it lit up.
Ms. Moran.
I, I share the same concerns as Mr. Patterson, and I think that this is a fine opportunity to not expand the signage, because you have a, a very clear, unobstructed corner with not a lot of competition, you're not talking about a mall where you just have a little bit of a sign, you also have, you know, two signs, one on the building, one on the corner, so I, you know, I think that you'd be fine to stay within the existing requirements. Also, the coloring and the lit aspect, I don't really see that there's any downside to keeping it within the requirements.
I'd just also like to make a note, I did mention it in the brief, that since the property at Butts Two Streets, they are, they are allowed by right to have two signs, and they are only taking advantage of one freestanding sign, so by right, they could apply for two 16-square-foot signs, and that would add, I mean, I think that would add more of a commercial look, and, and, you know...
Be less likely to be approved.
Well, they can have those by right, yeah.
Right.
They can have them by right. So I think that's, that's some consideration, that they're only going to install one sign.
Mr. Patterson.
Well, you say that this is going to save you money and save your renter money, but I'd like to know by what? Because you're going to amateurize this, you're going to amateurize this sign over a lot of rentals, and I'm not sure that that's a significant factor, I, I don't take that as a very good argument, unless you have numbers to actually...
So even though Enterprise is a, you know, a national company, and a lot of people think that we have deep pockets, our own branches, we're not a franchise, our own branches pay for themselves. So our branch managers and our assistant managers actually get paid off of the branch's profits, so Enterprise as a company does not pay for anything, the branch managers and the branch employees actually pay for it out of their commission checks, and they also can do their own pricing. So if they have higher costs, higher branch overhead, then they're not going to be able to have lower prices for their customers, because they as employees have to make money. So everybody sees the Enterprise name, and it's not just, you know, we have thousands and thousands of dollars to dish out, it's, we are, you know, caring for our employees of the business to make sure that they get a decent commission check to pay for their families.
I bet that's why you're not going to do two signs.
Correct. And to be honest with you, we would say we wanted to do one sign.
So they're suggesting, suggesting you do one sign to honor our sign code, when really...
And when I did speak with Ollie, she suggested having two signs and not going for the variance, and I said, "Well, if we have a sign on Springs Bar and on Davis Straits, and then the two building signs, it might look too commercial," so that's why we decided to go for the variance.
And it would cost too much.
Yes, it would cost too much.
Mr. Brown.
What about a nice wood sign with a single light on it?
Well, then our customers on this time of night can't find us to return and, and to get rentals, so...
Oh, they're going to know where you are, it's pretty noticeable.
And they have GPS. I'm, I'm not persuaded.
They can't find us now, which is why we're moving.
I initially felt the same thing, I mean, I'm all for making things easy for business, but with a lighted sign, and we've already really developed this stretch, we've got Town Fair Tire with their new lighted sign, every time we have a new lighted sign, we hear about it, and to start to expand that, I just don't think is a good idea, I'm sorry.
That's why we have a sign code.
Right.
And I think we really don't want to continue the practices that were in place when that mobile sign went up, quite honestly. We're trying to pull back from that kind of look.
Right.
That may have been acceptable 40 years ago, or whenever they put that service station on the corner, but today, we see them, we see the results of those decisions back then, and we're not happy with them.
Right.
So that's why I think we're trying to restrict it.
The mobile sign is, you know, much brighter colors, being the blue and the red, and also has the, the gas numbers underneath it, so it is a much more powerful sign than we would be putting up.
No, I, I highly applaud the appreciation of how much nicer the Enterprise sign will look over the current mobile sign and the prices.
Right.
However...
We did, yeah. There was a recommendation from the Design Review Board, but I don't know if you...
I'm going to make a motion that the application be denied.
Don't we, does, as a franchise, doesn't the Enterprise supply the sign for you guys?
We're not a franchise.
Oh, you're not a franchise.
We're not, no.
Oh. We have a motion to deny the application, or deny the variance?
I'll second that.
Motion and second for the discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion to deny the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One opposed?
One opposed.
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think your cost of that reduced sign is going to be so onerous.
No, we're going to go for two now.
We'll be sorry.
Good choice.
Stay inside.
Yep.
Okay, next is the signed variance for a temporary off-premises sign for the Falmouth Prevention Partnership, the Prescription Drug Takeback Day, Saturday, October 22nd, is a similar sign to the ones we've seen in the past.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it.
I think it's important to note that this is a... I think it's important to note that this is a short-duration sign this time, and for a public good as well.
It'll be up for 12 days, and these are two-by-three or six-square-foot signs.
Maybe we could just point out that it is going to be turn-in unwanted prescription medication on Saturday, October 22nd. I'm sure we'll announce it again, but 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Falmouth Police Station. So, just so people can think ahead and plan.
And the two major things we're trying to avoid are having people's drugs stick, stay in their medicine cabinet when they're not using them, or that they flush them down the toilet. Both of them are very, very hazardous things to have happen. And next is the announcement of Board of Selectmen's fourth quarter 2016 meeting schedule. So, we're meeting tonight. We will not meet on the 10th. We're planning on meeting on the 17th, and we have the town meeting article recommendations to discuss them. The next thing to look at is...
Can I ask a question on that since that is the planned agenda? Is there any chance for us to actually change the order of two other articles in that process? Or are we past that point?
We're past that point.
Okay. Because I just, in reading through it, to prepare for this, thought that there were really, we could, I guess we could, on town meeting floor, suggest that we move one behind another one. One on the historical commission request, and then the one from the comprehensive plan historical guidelines. It seems like one should follow behind the other. We'll talk to David about that.
David will scold us for not having done that ahead of time.
I'm sure he will. And rightfully so.
But the number has already been sent to the printer.
Okay.
I believe so. I don't think we, no, we've already, we've already both sworn, so we can't. So, if we backtrack a little bit, November 14th is town meeting. Election Day is on Tuesday, the 8th. Typically, we do try to have a meeting on the Monday before town meeting for any recommendations we want to make. We'll also, of course, be meeting on the nights of town meeting before town meeting. But I would expect that we'd want to have a meeting on November 7th.
Right.
And then, we want to, do we want to have one on both the 24th and the 31st, or one of those instead?
I would just vote against the 31st just because it's Halloween. Halloween, and I still have children, and I'm not going, I don't think it'd be wise to leave them both with my husband alone.
I think that's a great idea.
So, the 24th?
So, we will meet on the 24th. We will not meet on the 31st.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, you want to meet three times in October then?
I think that's what they...
Because you've already voted the 3rd and 17th. Just want to meet the 24th?
10th and 17th.
No 10th is...
The 10th is...
Excuse me.
Right.
You've already voted. Which is fine, I just want to make sure.
17, 24th, and then the 7th.
And you're saying that we've already met today?
Right.
We'll be meeting three times in October.
Three times in October.
Regular business.
I think that we have enough business that we'll be needing to do so.
Okay.
And then, we saw we'll meet on the 7th, then we have town meeting.
Right.
Then, in November, we have the week of Thanksgiving, which often is easier to meet then as opposed to meeting the 28th when the town hall has been closed in preparation for the meeting. So, January 21st would be better than the 28th.
Okay, yep.
We're expecting to have the quarterly report from the police department on the 5th already. We will not be meeting on the 26th, certainly. I would suggest we meet on the 5th and the 19th and take the 12th off.
Okay, good. Get your shopping room?
Yeah. And that should take care of us until 2017.
So, just the 5th and the 19th in December?
Yes. Individual selectmen's reports?
I have a couple of things.
All right.
I did attend the Cape Cod Canal Transportation presentation by the Department of Transportation. There'll be a lot of information online about ideas for improvements around the rotaries, the bridges, the canal. And one kind of interesting thing this year is that there's a lot of kind of airspeed about bike paths in really pushing forward, you know, just concerns, you know, that are smart for climate issues. So, you can look at that online. It was an excellent presentation at Mass Maritime. And the second thing was I attended the Community Action Committee of Cape and Islands' presentation at the Brazilian Grill in Hyannis. And Paul Nizwiki got the first HERO Award for really working on the goals of the CAC, providing services to low-income residents of Barnstable, Dukes, and Nantucket Counties to empower those folks and make their lives better, including some services toward immigration and for some folks to become citizens. So, two great events.
Mr. Brown?
I attended the beach committee meeting on 9/21, and that was a discussion primarily to do with increasing parking rates. Be the first increase in 14 years. And they're hoping that these increases will be passed, and it will reflect in maybe a little more support in their budget. The one thing that was troubling was that they've had such a busy year. They had more pump-outs required at their bouse houses and ran through their budget quicker, an event which caused the need to remove the bouse houses earlier. And I did bring that to Mr. Sussa in hopes that he could find some way of extending that so that wouldn't come into play. I don't know if you had any success with that.
Well, yeah, happy to comment on that, and I appreciate Selectman Brown bringing that to my attention. Bottom line, had beaches mentioned that there was an issue, it would have been immediately resolved.
Right.
And unfortunately, it was not raised. And I'm bringing that to their attention as a reminder that there's no need to operate in isolation. We're all working together. And that would have been quickly dealt with as we have in other circumstances in the past. So, it was very unfortunate to have heard that that occurred.
It's good that we all attend these meetings, right?
Exactly.
And so, that was the gist of that meeting. And then, I also attended the Joint Conservation and Planning Subcommittee meeting discussing coastal resiliency. There was a presentation by Kirk Bosma of the Woods Hole Group. And it was very interesting that they're already doing some work in other towns. They're designing berms and seawalls, and like Chelsea and Everett right now, they have a project. And the design work is being funded through the Coastal Zone Management Grant Program. So, we could hopefully get involved with that as well. And both the planning board and the conservation commission are going to go back to their boards and report what they learned. Hopefully, they'll maybe take some action and bring it back to us for a review afterwards.
Anyone else? Mr. Patterson?
Julian?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Julian and Jennifer Patee and I have been attending finance committee meetings. They've been steadily working through the capital budget and also the articles for upcoming town meetings, so we've been anticipating that. Also, attended at a working group meeting to review the administration of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, along with Julian, and also Jennifer Patee and Pat Harris has been attending. And let's see, I think Russ Robbins was also part of the meeting. It's been valuable to get that out and talk about it. In this particular meeting, Laura Schufel from Mass Housing Partnership actually talked about the difference between our Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund and the municipal housing, municipal affordable housing trust, which is set up by law in Massachusetts. And there are a number of communities that use that mechanism for managing some of the projects and for funding them. I think I could, without putting words into people's mouth, that generally, our consensus was that what we should be doing is refining the procedures and policies for our Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund because we can do what we need to do through that vehicle, and there's no need for us to sort of try to put in place another type of vehicle for trying to promote and support affordable housing here in Falmouth. So, that was really a useful dialogue to kind of figure out, is there a better way to do this? And I think we've decided, no, we have in place what we need. We just need to try to smooth it out. We're going to be working with a draft that was put together a couple of years ago now and see whether we can't get everybody on board and maybe tweak it a bit so that we're more comfortable with how it's working and make it a little bit more transparent process as well. Just really along the lines of what Selectman Brown was saying about vulnerability analysis. I was just reviewing over the weekend a draft of the Falmouth Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan that was actually developed by the Woods Hole Group as well. And it has several chapters on vulnerability analysis. And I think that's actually going to be a basis for us to look at. And I think you're going to find that to be a very valuable document because they've done a pretty good job of identifying most of, I would say, if not all, of the vulnerabilities that we have, not just for coastal flooding, but sea level rise, wildfires, all kinds of different storm activities. So, anyway, it seems to me that that document, which is in progress, should actually provide us with a basis for selectively prioritizing those vulnerabilities and figuring out maybe how we want to work forward with them, move forward. And of course, we have to fund them. So, I don't know how much money is going to come out of the Coastal Zone Management Group of the state, but we certainly should be looking for opportunities. And I might say, I know I've been saying it over and over again, but the Route 28 stretch through East Falmouth has a whole series of bridges which will be flooded if we get a really large hurricane in here from the right direction. And I think that's a vulnerability, but we can only work through the state to accomplish that sort of thing. But such things as raising those bridge decks so that they would be less likely to flood during storm events is something we need to start pressing because it's going to take years to get those kind of activities into their priority list, into their queue. So, I hope you'll, this is a good foundation for some significant planning to help improve coastal resiliency, but some, basically, address some of the other vulnerabilities that we could have identified within the town as well. And the last thing is just to mention that Cape Cod Selectmen and Councilors Association has a meeting coming up on the 14th, and it's in Eastham, which is a long drive. I'm going to go if anybody wants to carpool, or I'm more than happy to drive. So, just let me know.
And can I just say on that note, Mr. Chair, that the program will be on economic development. And Michael Colasso from the Falmouth EDIC is going to be speaking, along with a gentleman whose name escapes me, but he's right in Eastham. And the two of them are going to team up and talk about really sustaining the Cape with issues such as jobs and housing. So, it's a really great forum to attend if you can.
I actually had just a quick report that I attended, I guess it was last week now, maybe it was the week before. Sometimes the meetings run together. But the Commission on Disabilities is really, I just want to express the excitement that I have. For a long time, it's really been a limited number of individuals working very hard, but, you know, constrained by the fact that it's a limited number of individuals. And the group really has had, you know, a number of individuals who've joined who bring great experience and varied experience. And so, the commission is actually looking at expanding its mission statement, really reinvigorating and revitalizing their focus and expanding their focus beyond what they've been somewhat limited to, again, because of the limited membership. So, just really excited and proud to be the liaison to that organization and thankful that we have folks there who have been working on this issue for a long time. And I'm glad that myself, along with the other new members, are able to be part of maybe a newly energized commission. So, I think we'll be hearing more from them in the near future. Hopefully, anyone out there who has concerns about issues of disability or access or anything like that will reach out to the commission. Kathleen Haynes is the head of that organization. And, you know, come to the meetings. The dates are listed on the website. And certainly bring any concerns to that body. So, looking forward to hearing more from them.
Tom Andrews' report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It was my pleasure to convene a meeting of the Shellfish Aquaculture Working Group on this past Thursday evening, and good progress continues to be made in this area. That was our third meeting in a series. As Selectman Patterson noted, I also attended the finance committee meeting on Tuesday evening, and they've begun their important deliberations on the various town meeting warrant articles, as the board's aware. I do want to state once again, welcome to Peter Johnson Staub as our new assistant town manager. Looking forward to Peter joining the management team. And thank you for joining us for this evening's meeting, Peter. Great to have you with us. Also, I wanted to raise generally to the board the question as to, there had been some limited suggestions from different directions as to the location of the proposed new senior center. And I just wanted to raise in general to the board whether this board would wish to place on your Monday, October 17th agenda the notion of potential reconsideration of that site. I've spoken briefly with Selectman Chair, and I raise it in that spirit. That would be strictly up to the board, not for discussion this evening. But if you so determine, could place it on the following weeks, the following October 17th agenda, if you so desire.
So, typically, reconsideration can only be if there is new information available. And the new information I have received is there is not great enthusiasm for a turf field at the Field Hockey Lacrosse Field area. And for that reason, it would be appropriate to consider putting it on our agenda for the next meeting. So, the question merely, and we cannot debate it, is to whether you would like us to put it on the October 17th meeting, a discussion of reconsideration. It would be a two-part on our agenda. The first would be to reconsider, to vote whether we wanted to reconsider. If we did vote to reconsider, we would then have a discussion about reconsideration, or discussion of the sites. Or, we would vote not to reconsider, and we just...
I think I'd be in favor.
Okay. It really is not something we can debate.
Just saying, I'd be in favor.
Are we going to just vote or not?
I'd need to have a second to the motion to...
Oh, second.
Okay. We have a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. We will put that on the agenda.
I'll do.
And could I...
Mr. Brown?
Could we include in that discussion, just to, even if it's a brief recap of this whole process, because there's so much misinformation that's being floated about, why haven't we asked people their opinions and so forth? I think this was the hugest outreach in the history of the town, and I don't think people were paying attention.
Certainly.
That'd be helpful.
Okay. Anything else?
I move, oh, I move a German.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. We are adjourned.